I pledge my allegiance to the Constitution and its amendments. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that one.
Councilor Rehaw makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilor Robinson makes a second, any discussion? My favorite say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, moving on tonight to tonight's consent agenda, do I have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
You want to add an item to the...
You want to add there? Okay. This will be item E. That would be that resignation. This will be the origination of our public works director. And what's going to be the effective date, Joe?
It's technically effective today is the last day of December 13.
Would be 12/13, right?
Yep.
Which I believe is a Tuesday. I believe or I don't see it Friday.
It's Friday, Thursday or Friday. It could be 11th or something.
13th or Friday.
13th or Friday. Okay. All right then, do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's consent agenda with item E resignation of our public works director effective December 13?
Make that motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Godek makes a second. Any further discussion? My favorite say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. On that, I can only say I was shocked, Paul. I wish you the best of luck in the future of the mission. All right, moving on, may it open the public?
No one can sign up for me.
Okay. All right, public hearings, presentation of 2020 proposed budget, public input. When we look to a public now or...
So if you don't hold a presentation and then you hold it out to the public, okay, and then close the public hearing, then we go on to the conference. All right.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents, and staff. Tonight, we're going to discuss the 2020 budget. You can see on tonight's, there will be the presentation of the 2020 tax levy budget. After the presentation, the council must allow for public input, and then the final budget and levy can be approved. After approval, the final levy will be certified to the council and it can be placed through 2020 tax rolls. The budget process starts in April with estimation of salaries. In May, the department has received their worksheets to fill out to request their new budgets. In June, revenue estimates are made, debt service amounts are calculated, and capital budgets are worked on, and the department requests are received back. During July and August, all the data is entered to determine the levy that we're going to bring forward to the council based on everybody's input. In September, the preliminary levy is set, and you did that back in September. You, the amount that you set, you can roll up from there, you can roll down if you want to, kind of, in September. And tonight, we're going to set the final budget, the budget and levy. Our budget goals have always been to maintain high quality and cost-effective public services, address any priorities the city council sets, and maintain a strong fiscal position. So, the levy that was approved back in September, the overall levy was, is $3,984,590. And it broken down into different categories. There is a general revenue category, and there's a debt service category, and then we break down the general revenue category, which is harder for us. And so in that category, we have $3,136,000 going into the general fund, $240,000 going into capital equipment, that is an increase of $10,000, so over 2019, $60,000 going into building improvements, and then $180,000 going into street improvements. Now that is an increase of $60,000 over 2019, and I will note that the street plan calls for that increasing by $60,000 for several years to just to keep that, our street fund...
Or steady streaming of revenue.
Yep. And then there's some, the debt service part, and there's $20,900 that goes into the 2013 debt service, $20,470 that goes into the 15 debt service, and then $327,220 that goes into the 2017 debt service. That one is the bond that refunded the lease purchase that was originally paid, that's how we originally paid for these public works. So, and there's no changes in those. So, overall, the total levy history is shown here. You can see there's been a couple of years where it hasn't changed. 2011 and '12, we had levy limits placed on us, and then 2014 was another year that the state put levy limits on us. So we couldn't increase it but for certain things like the debt service, if we would have, we would have sold bonds or something.
Now why was that? Why were we limited?
The state would limit us because it didn't, they have done that several years in a row, trying to keep us under control.
Is it just us, or...
It was everybody.
Citywide?
Yeah, citywide, city and county. Yep. So, overall, you can see in the 10-year period there, the levy has increased by $1,111,430, but that is only a 38% increase in the 10 years, so that averages to 3.8%. So if we would have done 3.8 every year, we would have gotten to the same place. So, tax notices came out a little bit late. I know I was asking for them and they didn't come out until like last week. So you would have got them in taxpayer, and the first thing that I would look at would be, you look up at that values and classification box, and in this property, their value actually dropped by $200. I, you know, assessors set that, our city assessors go out. I don't know what generated that $200 decrease, but it's a good example of us saying if a property stayed the same, what would happen to their taxes. Now, one thing you can see is you have that home sit exclusion. I know we talked about that, we've had that out for many years now. It starts out at $70,000, or no, sorry, $30,400 for any homes valued up to $76,000, and then it starts coming off after your value is over $76,000. And somebody with a home value of $413,700 doesn't get anything. So that would lower your taxable market value. Then, the next thing I would draw your attention to would be the city tax line item. And on this one, you can see in 2015, this person's taxes was $1,232.63, and 2020 taxes is going to be $1,167.65. That is just the city taxes. So that is a drop of $64.98. And going forward, we'll have another slide that will show that if your value stayed the same, you'd actually see a drop in your city taxes. So what affects the property taxes? Well, like we talked, the market value changes, any levy set by the different districts, and then fiscal disparities, which anybody in the Southern County Metro area, that is any new commercial and industrial expansion since 1971, 40% of that expansion goes into this pot. They then take and they, that, the taxes on that is spread out through everybody. So we, you know, we might have a new commercial, and so that might, it gets spread around the whole Southern County Metro area, but we also are sharing and saying, any of the other cities that are similar, we consider they're commercial in this district. So, then, this is where we are showing the tax effect on the residential homes, and you can see that, say, you have a $160,000 house, the 2018 taxes were $729.50, and 2020 taxes on that same value would be $691.71, for a decrease of $37.86. We put that last line in, or column in there that says jumps $10,000, and that's taking and comparing that if you had like a $160,000 house, and you jumped up to $170,000, you go over on that line on the 170, you actually are going to see an increase of $17.90 because your value increased, okay?
But on the other hand, if it stays the same, it'd be $40.90.
Yep, yep. So, getting into the general fund revenues, you can see, overall, the total general fund revenues are $4,554,459. It is broken down to the taxes, that's self-explanatory. Licenses and permits, that includes building permits, the fines and forfeits is what the state sends on to us, passes through. Intergovernmental, big one there is LGA, we also have police aid. We used to have a fire aid, but that went away, that goes directly to parent now. We don't even see that lane. Charges for services are the school contract that we have, and then we transferred money from other funds to help pay for things that the general fund does for. We have some miscellaneous revenue, which includes interest in cable TV revenues, and then we, that transfer that comes from the liquor store, that's $60,000, and $10,000 of that is supposed to pay for...
Now, Darcy, in the intergovernmental, you said local government aid, and that increased this year, right?
Yep. The next slide, I'll talk about local government aid, okay?
Yep.
So, you get over to the local government aid, and you can see the history, see back in 2010 and 2013, they had taken away almost everything. That was one way that they were trying to balance their budget down with the state. Since then, 2014, they opted back up, and it's been increasing, and this year, we do have an increase of $67,283 in LGA, so that helps the general. But, you know, if the state would ever get, I hope that they never have taken away again. That was top part of a lot of cities. So then, going over to the expenditures, you can see that those are also in total budgeted at $4,554,459. It's broken down, general government is, you know, council, finance, administration, public safety is of course police and police and fire, public works is streets and recycling, culture and rec is parks, community development is planning, going, kind of, and building inspection, and then this line is just something that isn't allocated in the community departments, so it's a little bit expenditure. So overall, our expenditures are equal, are remains. We aren't changing anything, and if you saw the difference, the breakdown in the proposed budget book online, you can see each fund in there and where they're landing. Moving on, median household, household, you know, which is $192,900, would pay $72.56 a month, and be broken down to the different categories, like general government, and then they would, that monthly amount would be $12.00. And like I said, it includes council and administration, finance, that's managing the budget, that's enforcing codes, coordinating the functions of the city council, and the admissions and elections. Public safety would be about $29.59 a month, that's 24% of the police and fire response, any responding to calls for services, and other services such as vehicle lockouts and educational opportunities. Street and recycling would be $10.10, that would be any spill and ice control, street lighting, tree trimming, and recycling day. Parks and trails, $4.56, so that would be anything dealing with parks, that would be maintaining the golf fields, buildings at the parks, skating rinks, and trail areas. Community development, that's all the building inspections, any economic development to support city growth, rental licensing, vacant building registration, any disland permits, and any community enforcement there. And then the last is, we do, like I said before, the budget book was put online, and all the funds are there, we have, you know, capital equipment funds and the enterprise funds, whichever water, wastewater, groundwater, and liquor, those are all listed there. And so I would say that concludes my presentation tonight. If you have any questions, I'd certainly be willing to answer them.
Well, I have only question, as I talked to you earlier today, on that page 44 of the packet, can you explain that so the council understands?
Yep.
Because when you see the page on 44, you look at the revenues to expenditures, you see a difference by $90,000, but that's not what we're really raising. So first, who explains?
That's just the resolution that we are approving the overall budget, and yes, in total, down there, the expenditures are more than the revenues, but that is because there's several funds there, like your capital equipment funds, your debt service funds, they accumulate money over time to pay for things later, like our debt service payments, our levy is, we've generated a stable levy to save up the money and then make the payments out there. A couple of them, we are now getting down to the end of, I think, the 2013, actually, it's a couple more years, and that's paid off. So, we are, those at the bottom of the list, I would say more, are using existing cash balances, and so this is just a formative for us to approve our own budget.
Right, for example, would be the capital projects, equipments, 255,000 revenue, expenditures would maybe be $764,000, most likely not.
That, that is, but seeing everything in that fund to be paid out, and it's not going to, it shouldn't be paid out all extra, but that's just accumulating.
But as you stated earlier, the revenues and our expenditures are in line.
Yeah, if you look up above, that, just the operating budget, that's the one that you really should look at, and if you, those are all equal, we are, you know, when we set the sewer and water rates, when we lowered them, we did talk about, we are pulling our cash balance out for a few years here, until we get to a certain point. So revenues are going to be less than...
Right, we also have 222 residents.
Yep.
Who comes from, now booked up within the last few weeks from O'Brooke, which hasn't gone into a full recovery yet, but that $60,000 from the much of the median top of the revenues equals our expenditures.
Uh huh.
I also want to bring up this point here that I talked over with Darcy earlier, which today, on August 14th, the work session, we were told that the proposed 2020 tax levy tax rate was going to be 51.73%, 73.7%. It actually is 50.416%, which is a difference of 2.76 over 2019, less, 2.76 less percent, which the proposed difference between 19 and 20 was 221,000, is actually 191,000, so saves us $30,000.
Yes, we agree.
Also, Darcy told me that the city, city tax and market value for our state is at 2019 is $542 million, and 2020 is $597 million, for an increase in market value of $55 million.
And some of that is new construction. I need to show almost $12 million is in new construction for 2020.
Well, I want to commend staff, and I want to commend council for being, having a strong budgetary management, bringing us out of some fiscal order, and laying off the bond pull, which is one of the things I saw when I was running for mayor, how with all those bonds that we had been pulling, and the interest that was there, I think we now have that more checking balances than today. I think that's good, so. No, I like what I see in the report, so thank you. On that, I'll turn it over to council, see if they can have any comments. Joe?
The only other question I had was about the discrepancy in the formula there, what Steamer gives.
Kevin?
Yes, sir, I have all having questions, very nice report.
Okay.
Very nice report. My only concern with spending is if the state does eliminate the local government aid, the way we spend money in St. Francis, is we're going to have to have a lot of cuts to make up that amount of money. And all it takes is the state to say, they're not doing it next year, and we're down to $80,000 per se, $400,000 less, where do we find that money?
On growth, revenue coming in from growth.
That's the only concern I have, other than that was a good report.
Sarah?
I guess a good report. And then I would ask the mayor to open it up for any public input.
All right, at 6:21, open up for a public hearing. Anyone coming forward, state your name and address of the records and then comments. Anyone? No, okay. In that case, I would close the public hearing at 6:21. And we will move on to certifying taxes payable in 2020, resolution 2019-54.
Mayor and council, as we talked about, the overall total levy is $3,984,590, and that's what we had included at the premiere in September.
That amount hasn't changed.
Yep.
So do I have a motion to adopt certifying taxes payable in 2020, resolution 2019-54?
I'll make that one.
Councilor Rehaw makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a second, any further discussion? My favorite say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on tonight to adopting a budget for 2020, resolution 2019-55.
Mayor and council, this is the resolution we just talked about, just approves the overall budget for all the funds in St. Francis.
Okay. Okay, we're through all that. Do I have a motion tonight to adopt, adopting a budget for 2020, resolution 2019-55, do I have a motion?
I'll make that one.
Councilor Godek makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a second, any further discussion? My favorite say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Good work, too, especially, thank you, staff, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, the fire chief position.
Honorable mayor members of the council, in front of you tonight, the majority of the 2020 budget is not to be in the fire chief position full-time, starting January 1st. The position would be at a grade 17 step one, or 81, 910 per year. This position would report directly to the city administrator, so in front of you tonight is a job description as well as a request for a motion to move the fire chief position to a full-time position.
Do you want to read any more about that, about the description or anything like that?
No, I think the, the job description has been out there for a little while, this is an updated job description from what we had before, and I mean, what I mean by that is the current job description, the machine is working under, so I collected some job descriptions from various fire chiefs and put together what I kind of thought would fit this particular position for a need for prime. This is kind of the end result that we came up with. So it would be basically an approval to approve the job description and the status of fire chief position, making it full-time and exempt.
Okay. You know, I wanted to say that cuts were made to allow for this office, but as I stated earlier, the tax rates are 2.76 lower than 19, which is a savings of $30,000, so really we came up much better than the law right here. I've also stated before that the trend today is going from part-time to full-time, and this is not a full-time fire department, it's a full-time administrator, leader, which brings continuity to the, to the position and to the fire department. So, on that, I want to ask for any questions on this from council, and at this point, I know we've had all work sessions on this, we discussed this very thoroughly, got everything multiple, multiple times, so I'll just pass it on. Kevin, do you have anything to say?
No, other than I endorse it fully, I mean, we vetted this out very, very extensively, and we've given each council member an opportunity to do their own homework, and we came together and we've spent, I think, probably over seven hours or more on this subject alone. Our community is growing, we have a leader in place, currently in a part-time position that doing an excellent job, it's boosted morale, productivity, and I think the economy is right, time is right, and our citizens deserve, police fire, roads and bridges, and it's one of my main pushes, and I think the chief has done a fine job, and his, the members of his staff, the current firefighters that he works with him and for him, have endorsed him wholeheartedly, except for maybe a few, but I think it's an opportune time to do it, we have the right after the job. He's already been vetted over two years ago in a previous council, and I understand, looked at five or seven candidates on top of this, so it really needs no more discussion, I think it's the right thing to do, and this is the time to do it.
Thank you. Joe?
I have nothing to add.
Sarah?
I pretty much echo Kevin's, we spent a lot of time talking about this, and one of the things we asked was to find some cuts in order to help on this. We were successful in doing that, and so that was, really, that was kind of our biggest hurdle, I think, was really if we could afford it, and we were able to find those cuts, so I do agree that it's a good time to do it.
All right, Rob, I know how you feel about this, so I'll give you the last say.
I believe right now, in the city of St. Francis, we're not at that point. I'm not saying that I'm opposed, in the future, we get a little bit bigger, we are no Maple Grove, we're no Coon Rapids. Right now, I don't believe that St. Francis is big enough to support a full-time fire chief. I did vet the fire chief a few years ago for part-time, and I have brought up many deficiencies that the fire department is still not progressing in the direction that it should, based on my 12 years of experience of being a firefighter. That being said, if the council decides that a full-time position should be maybe full-time, then you should open it up to all candidates, you're creating a new position within St. Francis, and you should vet a full-time chief. So, right now, I don't believe financially we're, we're spending the money right, I don't see that we should be spending $80,000. I know for the last three years, I've went and asked, can we save money in the budget? Where can we find savings? I want to cut the budget by 5%, that's been my goal since I got elected, and we haven't found it. We have found percentages of increase or decrease in the tax levy, but that still brings in more revenue and more spending, and I've asked to find cuts, and when there's a lot, we go in and we find money, and right now, I just don't think that we're at a need for a full-time fire chief.
What I find ironic, by the way, is that you will, you will go along with a full-time fire chief if we interview out for it, but if we retain this fire chief to go from part-time to full-time, you're not for it.
That's, that's not what I said. I said if this council decides to push for a full-time fire chief, then I would ask that he be open to interview.
And I would counter that by saying, for two and a half years, we've seen a job that's gone at a 50% level, and the job is progressive, and the fire department is in a better situation than it's been for 20 years, and so this time here, why would we want to go out of house while we have already somewhat effective in-house? Why would we want to interview for, I think I speak for council of that, I may be wrong, but I don't believe I am, as far as interviewing when you don't have a need to interview. And as far as saving money, I can go back for a couple of examples about saving money, one was an 88 demolition that cost us $10,000 more that had a second chance to change that it wasn't. And on top of that, we were going to go with an animal control officer that was going to cost us more money than we are spending now for the adequate services that we're getting today. So maybe I'm saying to you that you want a 5% cut, you just need to look better than what you have to get to 5%. That's just my opinion. I'm just going to open this up, we're over right now, we're done with it, because I tell you, we've run a lot of debate on this, and a lot of discussion on this, it's time to put it to an end. So do I have, do I have a motion to adopt... So do I have, do I have a motion to adopt or, or make the fire chief position full-time from part-time or Dave Schmidt our fire chief, do I have a motion on the table for that?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Riddick makes a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, three to two. Thank you. All right, moving on to ordinance two fifty-six, second series of many fee schedule secondary.
Mayor and council, before you is the fee schedule changes for two thousand twenty. The only thing that has changed from our last meeting was the con broker per transaction fee was removed due to changes on January first. Otherwise, these are the same as proposed two weeks ago, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, we've pretty much gone over that, so I, I know I'm, for myself, so I'll pass this on. Joey, anything to say on this?
No. Thank you.
Kevin?
No, thank you.
Rob?
No.
Sarah? On that, this will be an ordinance, so it'll be a roll call, do I have a motion on the table to adopt tonight's ordinance two fifty-six, second series of many fee schedule, secondary?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Councilor Mubauer makes that motion?
Second.
Councilor Mubauer makes a second. All right, any further discussion? Do a roll call, Mark.
Bauer?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Neil Lower?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Humpet?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Five zero.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to summer publication of ordinance two fifty-six, second series, resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifty-six.
Mayor and council, this is for our publication for the newspaper to put the ordinance in and give any comments for the next thirty days.
All right, we've also discussed that at the last meeting, I think we all know where we're gonna go with that. Sarah, I'll start with you, anything else to say on that? Rob?
Um, Kate, as we move into, you know, twenty twenty, how does this, how can we do this better? Can we, internet-wise, I mean, newspapers are going away. So my question would be, how does a city come into the twenty-first century and, and make their publications more accessible internet-wise, social media-wise or something like that? How do we get to that? Because eventually newspapers are gonna go away and we're gonna be having to pay oodles of dollars just to get to the, the New York Times, just to make our publications. And that's just kind of my, my thought on how we do publications in the future.
Mayor and council, I'm gonna refer this back to Dave or Joe or Barb in regards to early galley sort of power.
Mayor, I'm Mr. Council, this is a fiercely debated thing in legislature and the Newspaper Association has a very strong lobbying that pushes back on that, so there haven't been very many changes on the publication part, so that's just what's in state law.
Gotcha.
But every year it comes up.
Basically, the paper covers their butts, really.
Or keeping them alive.
Well, I'm not keeping them alive, but I'm saying as far as the statement, the guidelines for publicizing this makes it, now it's in the paper, so it's up to the public to see the paper.
Yeah.
So it's just a way of saying, we're, we're showing it to you, you have to find it, but it's there for you.
Right.
So it pretty much covers the state's butt.
Right.
That's a good point, though, because papers aren't, yeah, that's ten years or twenty years, because it's, oh, ten years.
Don't get your move done.
All right, Joey, anything to say?
No.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is another ordinance, so roll call to have a motion tonight to adopt summer publication of ordinance two fifty-six, second series, resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifty-six, do I have a motion?
Okay, this, this, Mayor, it's a resolution, so it's just a motion.
Oh, just a resolution, you're right, exactly, thank you for correcting, that's right. Just looking at that. So it's a resolution, so a roll call, just a roll. Do I have a motion, Kevin?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Mubauer makes a second. All right, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now moving on to code enforcement extension request, four X X X dash two thirty-third.
Mayor and council, before you is a code enforcement extension request. City code outlines the amount of time that staff can provide to an individual or a property in regards to code enforcement issues. With that, we are allowed to give up to thirty days at a staff level. Beyond that, we bring it to council, we've had two of these come through at the beginning of the year as well. So with that, we work with the property owner, the property owner is working with Joey very closely in regards to the onsite issues that are needed, what is still inefficiencies. Some of the hang-up is in regards to the number of vehicles and getting the licensing to move those vehicles off the property. With that time constraint, he is asking until May thirteenth be the deadline for these, all of these corrections to be updated and fixed and in compliance. Staff will do progress inspections, much like we did the other two properties. At this time, I would recommend that we give them till the May thirteenth deadline and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, a couple of things as I read this, it's been, you've been addressing, the city staff have been working to address the neighbor complaints with this property for the last several years?
Mayor and council, correct. This is the property we've worked with this individual for several years.
Okay. And then also it says here about, in order to do this, owner has to address issues related to titles and sale of property, these steps do take time and is unlikely they will be able to completely meet city requirements within thirty days. So by May, they expect to be able to do that?
Mayor and council, at this time, I believe May they should be able to be in compliance.
Well, I, I was just wanting to understand, we need to, you want to address the council?
The resident is here, if you have any questions.
Please come up and state your name and address.
Chris Johnson, four five C four, three hundred and thirty third lane. This would be my address. Basically, I'm waiting on, please, that'd be an issue here, to give me my title back to my people, so I can give it to them. Being I don't have court date yet, I just put six months in hold, be the idea that I will before that, you know, figure this out.
Now you feel comfortable with that, Jason?
Yes. Then I'll figure out something else here.
Well, I know the council will pass, it's giving two extensions on the condition that is the only extension they're ever gonna get. Correct. Two problems I did work, so I would, I would present to the council the same thing, we give the extension, but it's a one-time extension.
I agree.
Okay. So I'm gonna turn it over, Joey, you have any comment on this yourself?
No, I think I'll go with staff's request. I trust your judgment. I believe in that.
Right, just so you understand, you'll come back after that, come back for next one. Kevin?
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns. Expansion to the backyard, you said you've been dealing with the gentleman for a while. It's noted here that some expansion in the backyard, did that take place early in the process, later in the process? I mean, did you add on to your inventory during first conflict or?
So then, I had a thing about before and actually had, obviously, I'm a good one.
Did you, and I'm not being a judge or anything, but did you think that was a problem? You still had stuff going on and the city's reaching out to you, knocking on the door saying, hey, we got an issue here, but yet more stuff keeps coming?
Well, they have the law approved, so I may not, but you know, they're on the right way, better deserved. But at this point, now I can't do anything about it.
I, I remember sitting here last year, or yeah, last two thousand eighteen, on the outside looking in and we had a winter set in, we had separate individual cars and again, weather became the hardship and it's like, not really our hardship. As I sit here, I think of the twenty-five neighbors sitting on here, your neighbors, and nothing against you, but it's always one to twenty. If we had twenty neighbors here upset and you weren't here, what do we do as a council? That's, that's what we deal with. So we're not, like the mayor says, we're not here for fun and excitement and abatement and making money and finding and, and causing grief and hardship, but there's twenty people out there and if you look at your area, the neighbors have, have taken very care of their place, I'm sure you have a nice place, too. Everybody has different hobbies, different things. We have a gentleman here last week who, his hobby didn't mean his home, well, he shouldn't have bought that home. I mean, it's one of those things, but if we had twenty neighbors here and they're making a lot of noise and not you not here, that, that puts us in a bad spot. I mean, that's what I'm thinking about. Um, are, are we doing this, this, if it wasn't winter time, if it was springtime, would we be giving him six months or would he have to make arrangements to move these items elsewhere to accommodate the city departments? It just seems like we're so flexible and I'm not, not flexible, but it seems like you can give it some opportunity and then give it some opportunity and now you have an opportunity. I just wanna know when we, when do we do our job? And if we had twenty neighbors out here, would we be as calm and effective as we are right now? So I guess it's kind of a statement, kind of, I'll go along with Kate's judgment and her department at this time as well, but it just seems funny that winter setting in is, you know, things didn't get done, is concerning me.
Mayor and council, this, this one is a little bit unique because there is another layer to this code enforcement that we have to give some time for.
Okay.
So winter is part of it, but there is, there is an ongoing legal aspect that we need to be considered of the law.
Okay, well, again, not very, I personally, it's just the circumstances, it's nice to be out there and let people know what we're trying to do here as well and we do respect the neighbors' rights as well, as opposed to your rights.
So that is a little bit of a problem for you to handle.
That's also, Kate, do you have something else to say?
No, I was just gonna throw in, I don't know what the title situation is, but if we're hanging on to the title, I don't know what's going on there.
Can you explain the title?
That's why I was gonna throw in, and if it's ongoing or not, that's not mine.
It is ongoing. There was an investigation conducted at the property some time ago and somebody was selected from there, questionable at this point, and it's, it's involved with the ongoing investigation.
Here's the case that you want to give them back and go over the judgment. I'm gonna wait for a review.
Robbie, is this news?
I, I don't wanna get into the title thing. I, I kinda sided a little bit with Kevin about, you know, if we had twenty residents on here complaining about unsightly property, it'd be a little bit more, you know, a little different. But with extensions for the title issue, I see, I'll go along with that because right now, we're, we're waiting on stuff to be taken care of first. It's not so much the weather, but I don't know what we'll do come May thirteenth. Should look good for the, maybe we might outside.
Okay. Sarah?
Well, I thank you for coming tonight and, yeah, I understand you don't have to type out the title, you can handle it a little bit, so hopefully you'll be your court case, you can get it worked out and you can get it taken care of before the May thirteenth deadline. If we can get it done sooner, we really appreciate that. I'm sure you're ready to be done in the long run, too, so.
Right, just so that you understand, this is a one-time extension, okay? And that, you know, I've said this before many times before, but we, we don't create revenue here by, by fines and abatements. We create revenue by growth. So this is the one thing, I know, I speak for myself, I'm sure I speak for council, this is the one thing we don't, we didn't get elected to do here, to abatement and fines, okay? It's, it's just not something we relish, become the meaning to do, so we only do that to get your attention. Obviously, you got your attention now and you know the problems, so as Sarah said, early, sooner, better, but no later than May thirteenth, I believe it is. Kate?
Correct. Mayor and council, May thirteenth is what the, you must.
And you're agreeable with that date? Right. Okay. All right, well, thank you once for appearing to.
Could we put a caveat in there, like maybe on April thirteenth, that you could check in with the gentleman and we could get it before the thirteenth hits and we go, yay or oh darn. Could we get something through the day prior to the final deadline, at least a report from this gentleman or yourself?
Correct. Mayor and council, I can update either within the off week or do a presentation or an update at a council meeting.
Thank you.
That's a good idea, Kevin, thank you. All right, so what do we need to do this, a motion for this? Do I have a motion for it? All right, do I have a motion tonight to, to approve the extension, code enforcement extension requests for that address, I'm gonna go four X X X two thirty-three or whatever, until May thirteenth with that caveat that Councilman Robinson just mentioned? Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Mubauer makes that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor Mubauer makes a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, good. Now moving on to twenty twenty street renovation project, resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This list project is regarding the bids for the twenty twenty street renovation project, general, some overlay of Erwin Street, Floro Street and two hundred thirty-first Lane. It also includes a repair of the valve boxes within the pavement. Total of seven bids were received. North Valley is the whole there at five hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Total of three funding sources are quotes for this project, as summarized in your packet. This project was slightly higher than the engineer estimate. The street prices were actually very good, but the valve repair, the valve box replacements was over significantly higher than the estimate. This project is the third type that we've done since twenty eighteen. This is the first one that required de-watering. The de-watering costs are significant. Some of the ground wires within four feet of the surface in this area, so again, those, those were, drove up a bit considerably from the estimate. The other thing has noted in the, right now, the city's been having troubles with their valves, the bolts back. These may or may not be stainless, we don't know it, this is probably how we dig down and investigate, but the ones that haven't been stainless, these were put in twenty-three years ago, oldest and then this probably area was done within about a three-year period, so. The ones that weren't stainless are corroded now, the city's been replacing those bolts and as they go with the experience of the renovation project. So in general, as discussed there, the strategy is to go after several valves in each year or each phase. Hopefully, I guess, if those are all good, we want to move to phase two and then the valve repair will be more than fifty-one dollars and so on. With that being said, staffs are recommending that council consider adoption of resolution twenty nineteen fifty-seven, resolution accepting bids and agreeing to contract to North Valley.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The funding source that I see on the first page, okay, the total is five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-five ninety-two, which is the exact toll in North Valley Inc. So how, how does that work? I mean, how did that break down? I mean, municipal state aid was at number two thirty-seven plus, local government was one twenty-four plus, local water fund, how, how did that bid match that number? I'm trying to understand that. Without seven bids, none of them matched.
Breaking up on paper the bid.
I don't think construction per the fund, based on our list of bids.
Okay, you're based on that bid.
Right.
You know, based on any, so you would have broken it down differently on other bids?
Correct.
Okay, that's true.
Yes, correct.
All right, and my other question to you is, do you feel that the eight valves gives you enough, looking at enough to get an idea that the other seventeen may not be, as you said? So if those eight valves are stainless, you're comfortable assuming that the other seventeen are stainless?
Correct. We're trying to pick the, the lowest, the worst ones in the groundwater, too, so they're probably the most corroded.
Right, and if those are stainless and in good shape, that should prevent.
Yes.
That makes sense. So you just basically, and I'm saying again on the number, you took the lowest bid and broke it down accordingly to come up with the state aid, local water fund.
Correct. Yeah, we took the next bid, the fund is mighty different, but we don't know that much.
Right, I, the way I looked at it when I first saw it was that you have those numbers and I'm thinking, how could they match? Of course they're not matching. Okay, yeah. Thank you for making me understand. Pass this on, Robbie.
Well, my question is the valves, you know, and it's, it's here or there, what, what fund do you pay it out of? You know, the, the locals' street fund for the valves or where you find the money for the valves versus our street project fund that we increase sixty thousand every year? Is that something that the city needs to take a look at as far as the valves themselves and finding a different way to pay for those versus our, depleting our road fund to do valve maintenance? I guess would be my question for the whole project, those would have to be the water fund that are different.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a decision, whether you're considering that road expense or a water expense, but I can't tell you, we cannot use the MSA.
Right, and I, and I kinda understand what the mayor was saying there and that's, the MSA is probably set at a certain amount and you just took the rest from the, from That's, the MSA is probably set at a certain amount, and you just took the rest from the, from the local or sewer and water. I think it would be, but, I don't, it, it's just where you get a few of the dollars for the valve replacements versus depleting our road fund. Because projection is, we wanna maintain that to be viable over the next three to five years, like we said. And every year, we start throwing more valves in the ground, our road fund is not gonna be where we think it should be. So, that's my biggest concern, is how to pay for that.
But one of those things is, when you have ground, some of the ground affected by water over twenty-seven plus years, uh, things were out.
I'm not saying not, not to replace it, but how do we?
But would it really be road fund? I mean, really, when we did the road, when we went down to RCC, wasn't the road fund really made for overlays?
Right.
That, that's for the street part, the water fund would have to pay for the, the valves and replacements.
Cause I mean, like I said, when, when we did the overlays correctly around the road program, it was basically sort of, you know, assessment on asphalt overlays.
For the road portion, that is correct. So, if you started to use, um, street fund monies to replace water stuff, you're effectively using the tax dollars to substitute utilities.
Which you shouldn't do.
Yeah, we've stayed away from doing that forever, and I don't know that that's.
So, this would be out of water fund, huh?
So, the valves would be out of the water fund.
They have to.
I, I, yeah, I just wanna, you know, it's not really broken down where the valve was in, you know, it's kinda.
Right, cause what you're thinking is, right, if we pull it out of the road, cause that'll wreck the road fund.
Right.
We put the sixty thousand dollars in after our initial balance, our initial deposit into it, just have the city relying on revenue to continue, you know, to do it. But it's based on only asphalt overlays.
Right. And you just keep throwing valves in there.
Right, sewer, like I know on Poppy Street, there's gonna be one section on Quay Street or whatever, that's gonna go from eight inch to six inch to eight inch, all perfect and proper. We're gonna take out that hourglass and make it eight inch all the way through, that will come out of, out of the sewer fund.
Okay.
Any valves will come out of the water fund. So, there's gonna be some assessments on Poppy because it, it's not over.
And so, the road plan kinda triggers these inspections of the water and sewer replacements that need happening.
Right, and of course, if it goes to stormwater, it'd be sixty percent city, forty percent residents, if it goes to stormwater. So, that's how it's broken down.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sarah, you have anything to say?
I'm just, I'm guessing it's just the cost of material that has caused that huge increase, I mean, that increase in cost.
De-watering?
Oh, I think it'd be more of the nature.
Just the nature of the work.
Or de-water.
Cause you can't, you gotta get rid of the water to work it out.
Basically, you gotta go on down ten feet to recover the valve, so you got six feet of ground.
So, that has to be pumped out.
Yeah. Well, it's gonna cost.
I love it, I love it. Joe?
Yeah?
I have a couple of questions, um, with the MSA money, um, Craig and Joe and I had some email correspondence last month about this. Had a citizen call, I think it was on 227, it was redone, that half their street got no parking signs. With this MSA money in this particular area of 231st and Flora, will that, uh, will something like that take place on the street then as well, using some of the MSA money?
Only on Arrowhead.
Only on Arrowhead?
Cause that's the only one that's on your state aid system, so it's the only one that qualifies for funds. So, we don't have to do it on the other two streets.
Okay, that leads me then to the, again, the, the citizen asked, and I guess I gotta help answer or ask for the answers. I talked to Joe and you about this before, um, we sent out a note saying your street's gonna be done, it, redone, this is what's gonna take place, there'll be some interruption or disruption, et cetera. But then, it's all said and done, this gentleman was surprised that the signs came in. I also talked to the police chief, and he reiterated that why they do what we have to do. Um, we put X amount of information in a letter to the citizens, should we put X amount plus in there? Because this is, and again, maybe I've got the cart before the horses, it's gonna happen down the road quite ways, but, um, how much do we let people know? Or, or should we let them know, and then what's gonna take place? Cause it is something that they're used to traveling on every day, they're used to using the access and the extra footage, as it were, for, uh, company gatherings, or just, uh, street parties, or individual neighbor gatherings, et cetera. Um, what will take place in this place? A solid white line, no parking signs, or we can address this down the road? It, it's just something that, um, came to mind as I'm reading this again.
This, this particular one, we go parking signs on one side.
And then we'll, a, a, and I know we haven't done it in the past, but maybe it's a practice that we should, I know it's open to can of worms, but if you ask him or tell him what's gonna take place, we're gonna have some people standing out here. But we're all about telling people what we're doing and why we're doing it, so that's not a bad thing. But I guess for the future, maybe we should think about expanding our, the information that, and hit, give us all the information that we know that's gonna take place, and rather than just, we'll get the signs in there, and nobody will be upset. Well, people get upset because it's a change, it's a big change, and, and maybe they won't be upset once they know ahead of time. I mean, if you, if you know it's coming, then it's, you know, a little softer, so. Um, I had a thing on North, uh, North, um.
Valley.
North Valley, have you worked with them before, Craig, and have we worked with them here in the city? I, I don't personally, but that, you know, you, you do a lot of work here.
They actually did this exact same project in 2018.
Okay. Okay, that's the only two things I have, thank you.
Right, yeah, I just wanna comment on what you're saying here about that, uh, you know, if, if we don't do the MSA, then we have to tax the people two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Understood.
So, I mean, you can live with the parking, no parking signs, and save two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, or we could go ahead and pay two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and then get break debt because we raised taxes. I mean, that, that's what we do here, I mean, we're a rock and a hard place.
No, I'd rather be break debt in front than on the backside.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, why would we not even wanna use Minnesota's state aid money?
Full agreement there.
You know, and, and, uh, in fact, I'll be going to meet tomorrow, uh, talking to the League of Minnesota Cities, which I've been pushing to push for more grant money for MSA. You know, they need to steady revenue their money too, and, and, and sometimes their projects for years are not, not, you know, not, uh, funded, and then it comes back for, two years it wasn't funded when we came in, and then they funded it, and then there was a certainty that the next year was gonna be funded. I'd like to see that funded every year where we can count on it. Uh, I, I'm also pushing for grant money for renewable energy. I think that's something that we should be thinking about now before our dollar per kilowatt price goes up by the East Coast and West Coast, we prevent it. So, those are things I'm pushing for, but I'm just saying to you, the MSA program's a good program when it's funded, it's no good when it's not funded. So, we need to keep it funded, that's what I'm pushing for right now. But like I said, again, here, we're a rock and a hard place, and we don't take that money, we'll get break debt because we didn't, we spent two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for it, and we should've. The first thing they're gonna say is, did you have your grant money or state money?
Oh, he was more than happy that he didn't get assessed, but it was just the after the fact part. I agree, the MSA money is our money, we paid the gas taxes for it, we're gonna use some of our own money back.
Well, what I don't like about the state, by the way, is that when they give us something, they have a string attached to it. I, I just want, give us the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, it's our street, we live here, you don't, we do. But that's really not how it works, so, um.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I appreciate that too, by the way. All right, um, I, I need a motion to adopt, and I hope you'll.
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor. On, on Arrowhead, are we no parking on the fire hydrant side, mailbox delivery side, or we, you know what I'm saying? Are we no parking on the other side? I would, I would assume.
I don't remember.
It'd be nice to no park on the fire hydrant slash mailbox delivery side, so that we're not really cutting off both sides, it's actually smart, so.
Can we add that option? We can do either, no matter what the plans are, we can flip it.
It does make sense, Flip.
It's always a coin toss, which, sometimes if there was, like, the one project that parks, city parks and stuff, so, stuck to that side, but this one, I don't.
I, I don't, I used to walk all the time, and I'm not sure about the mailboxes and the fire hydrants on, on, uh, those sides. But it'd be nice to, if we're gonna go park, might as well go park on the, at least the fire hydrant side, I'm not sure where, where the mailboxes are. But, uh, I don't wanna cut the, all the residents off on both sides, basically, so, that would be my suggestion.
That's a good suggestion. All right, it's up to us to say, Craig, right? Right, so on that, do I have a motion tonight to adopt, uh, 2020 Street Rehabilitation Project Resolution 2019 dash fifty-seven, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Bowles makes that motion, I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Councilman Robinson, I have a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And moving on to, I have, uh, 2020 Street Reconstruction and Water Main Improvement Project.
So, this item is, uh, up for discussion mainly for two items. One being the final assessment method, and the second is to discuss the schedule. This project, again, is a 2020 Street Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements Project. The exhibit in the packet shows the general four areas, Butterfield Drive, Poppy Street, uh, the River Shores neighborhood, and then the water main loop from Romwood to the old water to the wastewater treatment plant. The attached assessments summarize basically side by side, each property, from the left is frontage assessment method or per front footage, and the other one is per unit. So, those are being compared on those attached tables. In general, I think the front footage, which is the left one, is the best way to go. If you recall, call from the board session, the services are per unit still, but the water main, which they pay forty percent of the water main and hydrants and all that other type of, uh, work, that'll be by the front footage. There's some commercial properties that are empty, and some residential properties, larger lots that are empty. My opinion, the per unit just leaves out until a lot of interpretation, what the units are on those, um, open lots. And then, as far as the River Shores neighborhood, the townhomes are fairly compact, and they are smaller units in general. But their assessments are overdone if you go with the per unit, um, assessment method. So, I guess in general, that's my recommendation on the assessments. Um, the plan is to bring this, once we decide on the assessment method, bring this final feasibility to the next meeting. And the other thing I wanted to touch on was the schedule for the project, um, noting that we're thinking about fixing a neighborhood meeting in mid-January, which we don't have to do, but it'd be a more informal type meeting. Uh, run by staff, council, of course, is more than welcome to come, but it's a little more informal, probably have boards up, maybe a presentation, and probably split it between neighborhoods, cause there's a hundred and sixty of, of assessment properties. My experience in the past, if you have a neighborhood meeting, it just, just goes better in the whole process. But again, it's a little more informal, and they're more comfortable, I think, talking to you at those things. Instead of common right to the public hearing with council, they may be reluctant to, uh, discuss their assessments or their.
Well, we've seen that with their bidding.
Yeah.
And all, and all, after all those meetings, we barely got fifty percent, if ever. But I agree with you that, that communication is the best way to go.
There, those are, those are the types of meetings I'd like, well, we had about four neighborhood meetings of that.
All right, still, we couldn't get more than fifty percent, I agree with that, but I agree with you on that. Now, my question on this, by the way, is, uh, so when you're speaking frontage, so say one house has fifty feet of sewer, and the other person has a hundred feet of sewer, that person's gonna pay more because he's got fifty feet more sewer from his house? Is that how you're saying frontage?
Correct.
So, I'm asking you this, is, I mean, because I'm trying to understand this, a hundred feet in front of a house, a sewer pipe, okay? But there's only one connection to the house. Okay, fifty feet of sewer pipe in front of another house, there's still only one connection to the house? The pipe is there, we have to put the pipe in to get it there. So, I'm just saying, my, like, my question is to tell me, if you went by unit price, which I know you're gonna get some complaints on this, cause the unit prices in some areas versus frontage is higher, by anywhere from a couple hundred on higher than that. So, you're gonna get some complaint on that. So, my question to you is, if we were to go by unit price, can we still afford it, can it be done, or does it have to be done based on frontage?
Well, the numbers are the same.
So, the total numbers are the same? Okay, the total bottom line is the same, okay?
But I think, in the same respect, someone can argue, well, if everyone had fair treatment like I do, you'd be thirty percent less watering. That's why they consider the front footage. But everyone's paying their own service by the unit, that's not.
Yeah, cause this is one of the biggest complaints I've had over the years, as far as like, you know, where we have our, our, our connection, our, our valve to the houses for water supply, and that they take care of it from that, that stop, the curb stop right where we have it, where we set up, we're actually from the main to the house. And to me, we wouldn't be able to cash, use that as a cash register until we supply water to them. So, to me, I've always thought, and I know cities, there's a mix of what cities do, a lot of them do it from the way we do it, from the meat, from the main to the house, and in between, it's the responsible, responsibility of residents. Other cities do it from the curb stop to the house, and from the main to the curb stop is done by the city. My point is that you get a main of supplying water, you can't charge some money unless you get that water to them. And you can't get that water to them unless that main pipe goes to that curb stop, from that curb stop to the house. This is a big one, I bet, piece here. So, right now, you're telling me a hundred feet of sewer, and I have fifty feet of sewer, the sewer still has to be there, no matter what, how many feet there are, it has to be there, because you can't give sewer water without giving them that main. So, to me, I don't understa, you know, I, I'm not, I guess, so pro for frontage as I am for per unit. Seems, seems to me, uh, per unit, uh, to me, as long as the bottom dollar lines and the dollar amounts are the same, um, the main is the main, it's the supply. You're supplying that amount of, that, that, that utility to them, and that one access to them. So, whether you have two hundred feet of main and further house, you still have only one connection to the house. That's what I'm saying, so, that's just my thought, council opinion, of course, will listen to that. Uh, but that's my thought, I just wanna make sure that the bottom line, whether it be unit or frontage, is still the same bottom line, just broken down differently.
But like, on Butterfield, and I think maybe Poppy, we have some three hundred foot lots, your subsequent policy cap, a subsequent policy cap's there at like one fifty. But if I was the person with an eighty-foot lot, and I'm paying the same for the water main as the person with the three hundred, I guess that is just as hard to make, I guess.
Right, but it's the water main, so to supply water to them, they have to have a main.
Right, but if, if they didn't have the three hundred foot lot, they had the eighty foot lot, we wouldn't need that extra two hundred, twenty feet of main.
Right, but that's how it's platted out, I mean, that's just, some things work like that, I mean.
Fire beware.
Huh?
Fire beware.
All right, all right, well, I mean, I'm doing this as a discussion, we're discussing.
Right.
That's my thought here, cause you're gonna, and it's an informal meeting that you want, you're gonna get some.
I'm gonna try and get my logic like this.
Well, actually, because I'm just saying, when you call it an informal meeting, you're gonna get some people asking that same question, because they're gonna see an increase based on frontage versus unit, it just aren't. So, you know, we wanna be fair from square, we wanna be flexible where we can be, uh, but at the same time, we wanna do right by the residents. So, um, either way, I, I, I also wanna emphasize with the public viewing here, that it's stormwater related activities, it's sixty percent city, forty percent resident? Water is for, uh, how many percent wa, is resident?
Services.
Services, right, same as sewer, I believe.
This project has no sewer.
All right, if it did, though. The only thing that's paid for by our road fund is the overlay.
Correct, and then it's sixty percent city, forty percent residents on water main improvements.
Okay, water main improvements, sixty, forty, same as stormwater. Okay, no storm, there's no sewer involved here, and again, the overlay is paid for by our road fund, just like going back to Steve.
I think there will be some assessments, but not related to road.
Right, so, yeah, that's what I'm saying, cause, you know, I, I live on Poppy, I know I'm gonna pay assessment, I already know that, I didn't know that for years. Still, I'm in better shape than I would've been if I'd not had the road program. Which I can feel sorry for. I've seen that before, but at least we have it. But we may have changed for the good of the public, which is what we serve, so, okay. All right, Joey, anything to say on that?
No.
And that decision, can you make later on in this one?
Which, which decision?
The assessment decision you need to make, right?
I need it today, if we're gonna put it in the final piece of the inventory. Otherwise, I'd be out for all.
Okay, does that change anything? Darcy, does something say here?
I just wanted to point out that, that project, we will probably have to buy it, you know, pay it back with the assessments and water.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that, that part of it will be bought.
Yeah, it's, uh, thirty dollars.
Right, but the difference of this buying is not what we want, it's what we need, that's the difference. Want and the need, wanting, when you pull a bond for the want versus the need, the need's the better way to pull a bond. In my opinion. All right, Joey, anything to say on all this? Al?
All right, I wonder if seeing bold would be better, to make a more, more decision, I guess, just see everything in front of us. I don't know if that would be better, as far as how you're gonna assess, that's what you wanna know, I hate it.
My recommendation is front footage and per unit on services, which is the left one, and the other one is per unit, um, everything.
I would try to go with your recommendation, I think that would sound more fair, cause you have a bigger lot. I would try to go with your recommendation. I think that would sound more fair, because if you have a bigger lot too, you're also better for it.
Well, I can tell you right now, on page eighty-four of your packet, if you look, I can tell you two people that would be loving going to a frontage would be the Weaver Brothers Company. On the other hand, I could point out some other people that may not be so happy going from unit to frontage. I mean, I was telling you, if you look at these numbers.
You're never gonna make everybody happy.
Well, that's for sure. That's our job.
Anybody that's got a fan, you can just stop, because that's what they pay their taxes for, you ask.
Right, and then if you go on other places, you'll see people going from, here's one example here, I won't say the address or whatever, going on a frontage price of fifty-seven ninety-four and on the unit price of thirty-four seventy-one. So you're gonna get that type of thing.
So again, I think the frontage method is more defendable if there's appeals.
Which David's a bit different. Just, yeah, I think they appeal, it's a very.
Kevin, do you have anything to say on this?
And again, I think you said, Larry, this is more of a need than a want. The street is disintegrating, it's time for a face flip on the street. So if you're gonna be in there messing around, you might as well upgrade the, not might as well, it's prudent to replace what's there or upgrade what's there. How old is the water main and stuff that's in there now upgraded?
It's the thin walled PVC, which we did do a cost comparison, we discussed it briefly in that work session. It's not much cheaper to necessarily replace it with a new style C nine hundred type water main.
But all the old stuff would be coming out, right, without adding on to anything?
Correct. Add new services to the right way.
And as we look down the road in twenty, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, other projects like this coming, will there be other things before this council or other councils? In the same manner, do you, what's the projection out there? Will we have some more stuff like this?
I don't think we have any reconstructs from twenty twenty-one for sure, maybe not even twenty twenty-two. I don't remember often.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Well, how's your feeling on the frontage to unit price?
I guess frontage, like Joe said, you know, if you have more space, the Weaver Brothers used as an example, I'm not sure what that is in an apartment situation, maybe their property taxes make up the difference. You know, they're gonna pay it one way, they're gonna pay it the other. I mean, they could be paying more of a commercial.
Why don't they go on commercials, so you don't get your assessment? You're a resident, you own a three hundred foot lot, you get capped at one hundred and fifty. If you're a commercial property, you own three hundred feet, you don't get capped, you get the whole three hundred.
Right, and that Weaver, if I'm right, that's Jeff Weaver, a part of buildings on Poppy. Former council member of Anoka, Anoka. All right.
I guess I would go with.
I've been getting a call from Jeff, let me see if that's, I can tell you that right now. I'll get a call from Jeff all the time. All right, anything else you have to say?
No, sir.
Well, I haven't really looked at the values versus frontage or per unit. But for me, if I own eighty feet and I'm at the very beginning and there's nine hundred feet behind me, my section of eighty feet is getting a lot more stress than the last person at the end of the line. So mine's getting used more, my eighty feet is getting used more than anyone down the road. So I would be more inclined to a per unit because I don't wanna have an accident because I'm right at the beginning of the main and everyone else is pushing trash and debris down my piece of pipe and then my eighty feet fails. And I've had to pay footage when it should be kind of divided up by units. That's kind of.
Right, this is my sewer, this is only water.
Well, same, same amount. My eighty feet has to push water and stress to, to more miles, let's say. But I paid frontage of eighty feet. I have more stress on my pipe than the people at the end of the line where all they're really getting is their, their main water. Does that make sense?
Well, you're not responsible for that eighty feet. You're only responsible for your service.
Well, we're assessing, if we do frontage, we're assessing on their, on their footage. And some people's footage may be more stressed than other people's. That's why, kind of why I'm leaning towards per unit. Everybody is paying for the same piece of pipe to be laid down, however many feet that is, divided by all the units that are attached to it. So I kind of signed with the mayor here on per unit. Now, based on this apartment's gonna pay a lot more than, you know, if we went frontage, it's how many feet needs to be laid down to make this entire road work. Everyone that's attached to it should pay the same amount. That's how I see it.
Sarah?
Um, yeah, I mean, I can, I can see part of your point there, Rob, I can, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know that it's, people are, I mean, I guess people might look at it that way, but I don't know if there's, I mean, like, correct that you're not responsible for that pipe. That's, I mean, if something goes wrong, that's still not on you at the moment. I mean, it's inconvenience, obviously, a huge inconvenience if something goes wrong, but.
Right, but as you pay for it by frontage, you're responsible for it now.
Yeah.
You know, again, my whole perspective here is that the main is the main. To connect to these houses, we have to supply a water main and a sewer main and stormwater. We have to do that. There's, in other words, it's not, if it was a hundred feet, a hundred feet of frontage road, a fifty feet of frontage road, and the hundred feet had two connections and the fifty had one connection, I can see your point. But the hundred feet, fifty feet, three hundred feet has one connection, one connection to the main. So we charge them based on that one connection and yet we're gonna charge them by footage. It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to me, that's just my thought. Like I say, again, I'm against the curb stop thing and all that, I've been against that for three years because I want to know one thing, if you don't get water to the house, you can't charge them for water. So you gotta get water to the house, has to come from the main or the curb stop, I think should be our responsibility, but I know how it's done. Other states and stuff like this, we've gone over this and understand all that, but I find that kind of difficult all the time. On the other hand, we are flexible where we can be and we'll look at it on a case by case basis. That makes me feel a little bit better. On this here, you want that decision now, tonight, so how do we do that?
Do you motion second and take a vote? Pick one of the other.
Okay. But do I preface it by frontage or unit? Do I preface that by that or how do I do that?
Craig had it split up to, to, our services are per unit, right?
They pay a hundred percent. The resident pays a hundred percent of their service.
Right, the water's a hundred percent.
But per unit.
Right, and then product for the pipe.
Correct.
No, that was right, I was trying.
Okay.
Clarify.
No, I mean.
Do we conversate a little bit more and we'll just make the motion on either frontage or per unit based on people's for or against? It sounds like we have three frontage and two per unit, we just blow on that.
Yeah, we do it like that. Okay, okay, Pete.
Again, my main concern are more of the empty lots and.
How do you get paid?
Yeah, well, we're just opening myself.
So on an empty lot where there's no structure, there's no service to that lot.
But like commercials, let's say, across the same address hardware, you gotta put some kind of unit on those lots that they're using for storage.
Right, like the storage.
My frontage, there's no question, it's the frontage.
All right, well, in those situations like that, why can't we go frontage for that and unit for the other?
We gotta pick now. Everyone's gotta be.
It's gotta be uniform, uniform.
Per project or per, per the policy?
Okay.
I don't know if we could pick. For the street, if we can.
Yeah, that would be happy.
That can get really tricky. I'm gonna do it per street, I think.
I mean, you can't separate commercial off from residential.
We got best practice here. My question is, how do you get, if it's vacant, how do you get frontage? Who pays for the frontage if it's vacant?
Who owns the lot?
Okay, they just don't pay for a service. They just pay for the pipe in front. And that's what I'm saying to you. We can't split out commercial or lots only. We can't split it as to be brought for every, taken for everybody.
It has to be what the policy is for everybody. What's our problem? What's our, what have we done in the past?
I think we offer, it's up to the council to per unit or frontage if I'm not mistaken.
Do we know where Kerry Street is? Because I got a sense, but I don't know if it was per unit or frontage. Darcy, do we know? Kerry Street, was that frontage or per unit?
I think that was frontage.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure you followed the frontage in the past.
Oh, frontage. I'll be, I'll be glad it not.
That would have been for the street portion of it.
Right, before we had a assessment, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're not deviating from the past. If we're, if we're kind of gonna stick to frontage, then I'd be for frontage.
But also remember, there's, even if it's frontage, there's mechanisms and the policy. Like you have a corner lot, you get a hundred fifty for credit on the long side. So we have eighty foot here, a hundred fifty there, we still want to pay for the eighty. So it doesn't necessarily mean just because you have a corner lot, you pay more. It's the excessive policies trying to equal things out, so.
Hey, let me ask you, what is this AP name and C, commercial, I understand, whatever, but ATH, what is that?
That was a park. Complex.
Eight, or a park, right. Tash Towns. So it has to be one or the other, so we have to blow on this. Okay, um, all right. So can I make a motion here? I have a motion made. Twenty twenty street reconstruction of water main improvement project with the assessment being for frontage versus unit. Should we do it like that? Can we do it like that? Okay?
We understand the intent.
Frontage versus unit. Okay, once again, I want a motion for two thousand twenty street reconstruction of water main improvement project based on, assessment based on frontage versus unit. Do I have a motion?
Frontage in favor.
Right, frontage in favor of the unit.
You'd be picking front. Make sure.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Councilor Buhner makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Buhner makes that second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, meet. Okay, so I give four to one vote. All right, moving on to fire flow water meter.
Mayor and council in your packet tonight is a gentleman discussing a large fire flow meter for Woodhaven West. We initially thought we could just replace a few of the parts and components of this device. And we found out later that that is not what we are allowed to do based on the UL FM rating and certification of that device. Basically, this fire flow meter, low flows pass through a smaller meter and when there are high flows or, or say, a fire and there is more water in demand, the larger check valve will open up and allow that water to flow through that meter so that we don't collapse pipes and we don't cause a problem within Woodhaven itself. So we did not account for replacing the entire device. We thought we could do the smaller pieces. So before you is a plan to replace that entire device with matching the Ferguson Waterworks Neptune meters that we're doing in our water meter changeout program. The device is thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. And I did not get a second quote for that because of its uniqueness with the Neptune product and the water changeout program. So you would have to say that that's okay or if you'd like me to go try and get another bid from another company and potentially not match that, that is your decision, so. I'll answer any question.
All right, UL is underwriter laboratory, right?
Yeah.
And what's the FM?
I wish I could tell you, you know.
Okay.
I'm gonna say fire.
My question is, how important is this UL slash FM when no one knows what the FM is? How important is it?
I believe it has some fire protocol on it, a fire certification. If we step out of that certification and something were to go wrong, we could be held liable as a city. Something, something's home was to burn down because the failure of that meter and failure of water pass through there, I think we would be liable for that.
You know, and when was this put all in effect? Do you have any idea when this was all put in effect?
This meter was probably installed in the early nineties, maybe even a little earlier.
You know, one day I would like to see where this city goes forward without having something from the past coming to haunt us. I would just like to live long enough to see that, you know, I mean, this is the frustration where when nineteen ninety, two thousand ten, I said this more than once, this city actually grew by a sufficient amount of population. And yet in that time, I really questioned whether the city wanted to grow or intended or even thought it would grow. Because it sure didn't do piping, like what Craig has said, we short-staffed piping in that work session, using the cheapest of the cheap, which is now costing us years later, coming back to haunt us. It just amazes me that, like you said about cutting money, well, we're spending money because we have to spend money because someone didn't do the right thing twenty years ago, twenty plus years ago. And that's, that's the headache I see those council faces every day and staff too, by the way. I'd just like to get to a point where, where we are being punished for our own mistakes versus someone else's mistakes. Like having a liquor meeting, too small for storage, nowhere, I mean, type of thing like that, stupid picking back then. I could go on and go on, but I don't want to spend another hour here in the micups. So.
I appreciate you.
Okay, anyway, all right, that's just my, but Joey, anything to say on this?
No, just that, that factor is very usual.
Oh, factor usual. The bottom line is it's a poor fighter, I agree with you, the responsibility, we can't take chances. It's just disgusting to me that things weren't thought about like this years ago and we shouldn't have thought about this. Because next, because years from now, as we do these things today and I'll go on record saying this, councils down the road will have a lot easier because we're thinking where we should be thinking years ago. Preventive, preemptive, preventive and proactive is the way to think, and we're doing that today. Now, other councils will benefit from our work.
That sounds pretty critical, so.
Well, but it is right. That's just the way it is. I'm not gonna give credit where it's at too. Anyway, Kevin, you have anything to say?
Did Ferguson have any, when they looked over all our equipment on this, did they, did they have any responsibility? Not that I'm pointing to blame, but if they looked at all the stuff that we needed, they submitted a quote of over six hundred thousand dollars. Didn't they look at all their apparatus and?
This was a staff decision and, you know, we looked at our inventory and this is what we presented to Ferguson to give us a quote for something we missed, messed up. We did, we thought we could save some money by not replacing the entire device.
Does Ferguson think they have a capital situation here? I mean, it's thirteen one, we just spent six hundred plus thousand of them. Is this their best, final, best number they can do with us after all the work we've done?
Actually, we compared the price to the meters that when we put in the Oak Grove, we updated those meters in the Bridge Street project, and this is actually, I believe, parishes only a hundred dollars less than those meters were in sixteen or fifteen. I think it's a par.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I know you're not gonna be here, but this, just for future here, I would just recommend for staff, you know, it would be better to look at it from this perspective and work your way down than now working your way up. In other words, like, you know, when you're bidding something, I would rather, like what Kevin said, bid, bid the worst case scenario, not the best case scenario. That way, if you bid at the worst case and it comes down to best, you're really well off. But when you're doing the best, working your way up, it doesn't look so good. I just say this for future bid or for future where, so. That way, we don't get what we call sticker shock, okay? Even though I understand the funds are available in the year of the modern sewer operations, I mean, the budgets pay for this apparatus. Rob, do you have anything to say on that?
Well, I talked to Paul a little bit about it, because I was concerned about, you know, as Kevin stated, um, there was a bid and obviously this part was to be replaced. And Paul told me that some of the stuff that should come back to the city that, um, won't be used or, um, from Fergus, so I'm kind of, you know, leaning towards making this, this purchase uh, without a second bid, um, with the hopes that some of that previous, um, work can come back to the city. So that thirteen one will be hopefully a little bit smaller even still, so, that's all I have.
Most of the thought. Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, I get that it was a, an oversight and obviously it has to be fixed, so I think, you know, I don't, I don't think that getting a second bid, I don't think we're gonna come to heaven necessarily, so.
Well, they're here, they want it done right. They want it done, so. I'm going to add to, I have a motion to, uh, adopt the fire flow water meter change.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Reddick makes that motion, do I have a second?
Sounds okay.
Councilor Bauer makes that second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, thank you. Uh, I want to just clarify one thing here, on the two thousand twenty resolution, two thousand nineteen, uh, no, that, two thousand twenty street reconstruction, the assessment will be based on frontage. You know that, that's how you do it, right?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's clarified. It's one of my no balls, but I want to make sure it's clarified. Well, just because of my pet peeve of beans, and that's just always going to be one of my pet peeves and contracts, that's the thing. Anyways, um, moving on to item H, biosol's disposal.
Mayor and council in your packet tonight is, uh, just some consideration on how you want to utilize the hundred and eighty-three acres. There's a long history of our hundred and eighty-three acres, um, and a lot of, uh, interesting turns and twists that have presented itself throughout the time that the city has owned this property. I think kind of one of our last, uh, discussions back in August of eighteen, I said that there were still some things that we needed to figure out with that hundred and eighty-three, if we could utilize it for biosol's disposal or not. And so I think we've answered the questions now, I think we're, we're at a point where, if you review the information here and this, this gen memo, um, gives council the opportunity to either utilize the hundred and eighty-three as a site for biosol's, uh, land application or to not. We, as a wastewater treatment plant, we do produce biosol's. It's just a, a, a thing of that particular facility. And we have to get rid of that at some point throughout the year, whether we use land application or, uh, landfill, where the haul is rotated to a landfill. You know, we've tried to find the cheapest way to do that, uh, through this whole process of getting this plant up and running. And we put the hundred and eighty-three acres into consideration due to its proximity to his water treatment plant. Uh, and the fact that it is sand and the farmer, uh, does request or would like to have more nutrients provided onto that soil.
More natural fertilizers, not.
Natural fertilizer.
I'm saying, I read that too.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We will continue to, uh, try and permit as much farmland as we can. Uh, as we continue to, to go through this process with the MPCA and with our facility, obviously with growth comes more biosol's. Right now, the last two years, we've been at about three hundred ton has been the end product, uh, when we have our dried cake. If you recall, we had to land fill it, uh, in eighteen because we did not have permitted sites. We started working on permitting sites almost immediately and it has taken this long to, to work through that process with MPCA and, and their requirements that go along with this as far as, uh, testing the land, soil samples, setbacks, applying setbacks, making sure that, um, you know, we're not putting any biosol's in a spot where it might have some other issue, um, so, we're, we're following their process, doing what they're requiring and in the end, you know, we started with approximately seven hundred acres that we wanted to have permitted. That has come down to less than two hundred right now. And that includes if we were to utilize the hundred and eighty-three. Now, this year we ran, ran into weather issues, uh, will be land decline in spring once the, the fields are ready to receive that dried cake. But, uh, you know, we want to make sure that we have as much land as possible for biosol's application so that we get, save money, uh, and make sure that we're at a point where we're flexible enough. And depending upon what the farmers are doing, we can work with them when it comes to a crop still in the field or crop has been pulled off. Um, depending upon what kind of crop they're putting in, we want to have enough land so that we are able to, to dispose of our biosol's, uh, in a readily fashion when it's, when it's time. So we don't, aren't so tied to the weather and tied to, um, the farmers being able to get their crops on, so.
Right, but of the hundred and eighty-three, there's only one hundred twenty-seven point six acres we can, we can biosol's both.
Right, there'd be only a hundred and twenty-seven that we can.
Right, and of the existing hundred ninety-six plus acre, a hundred and ninety-six point six, whatever, say, say that's what it comes down to, is that done in total, but let's say a hundred ninety-six acres. On that, how good is that, how many years out, are we still good at three hundred tons at the level we are right now with the acres we have in play without extra acres? I know we'll be trying to go more acreage, but seeing we don't get more acres, we only have to deal with the one ninety-six, is that ample enough for years down the road for us?
It should be, yeah, but again, we want to, I would, I would like to get at least a thousand acres approved by MPCA so that we have that flexibility, I, I wouldn't want to stop and, and find ourselves in a hard place.
Right, the more, I agree with that, but also, by the way, what I understand to read this is that the tenant is fine with this, he wants this?
This, this is something that we, when we started building the wastewater plant, uh, that question came up, you know, can we use the biosol's on that property? So we did put it into the land lease, uh, in two thousand sixteen so that anybody who would come into that uh, land lease, um, understands that this is an option.
But he wants it.
Yes.
Okay, and on top of that, from what I understand is, uh, if we were to sell the property after two thousand twenty-eight when the bond comes full payments, okay, we still have to wait one year to sell it?
Right, so that's, that's just planning, um, you know, if, if we know that the city has intent to sell that property, uh, we would, we would make sure that a year ahead of that, we're stopping flowing biosol to that. As soon as you put that on the market, you'd be able to move that property.
Well, two thousand twenty-eight, so that would make it, uh, let's see, about eight to nine years. Hopefully maybe some developer will come up there, want to go residential last year and actually use that land. Would definitely sell. Because right now the price we pay for that in N O seven and the bond and interest on top of that has made that a no win situation other than dumping biosol out of it. Like I say, it's pretty much a platinum gold mine, not even gold, it's a platinum mine, dumping biosol out of it. At least it's getting some use. I say that facetiously because when I look back at O seven, how that was purchased and why it was purchased, getting no use out of it and then the bond and interest over the years has increased the amount that that we, we, it's been a sinking well of money for years and now we might actually get some use out of it. We'll never break even on that property, but at least we're gonna get some use out of it. So, um, I'm very much pro for it myself. Joe, what do you have to say?
Nothing other than I notice in the packet it said something about how it's not feasible to sell, I don't think we might intend to sell if we wanted to, because we had that in a work session earlier this year.
Because what?
Well, based on, on just how the bonding's worked out, we have to pay it off and all that, so, just throw that out there.
Yeah, that's right, we figured that out.
Wouldn't make sense.
Wouldn't make sense. Kevin?
Um, I know that, um, it, it's driven around farm fields in rural Minnesota now, you, uh, you see some white product there that I, my understanding, I, um, it comes from the metropolitan uh, wastewater plants, it, it looks like white ivory bars of soap just smash and crunch. Does our biosol's, is it resemble or is that product a similar byproduct that taking out the bottom of tanks?
That is likely lime from a water treatment plant, lime softened. Uh, that is, uh, just a product of making drinking water. So that, that is used to balance the pH of the soil.
I was in, I was under the impression there was also some biosol's from the other treatment plants, the same thing, but, okay.
Also, what color is the biosol of cake?
The, the biosol of cake is a brown, a dark brown, earthy.
And is it still a practice where some sewer pumping, uh, companies can pull right from a residential or commercial tank, they're going out in the hinterlands and they can drive out on a firm solid field and spray what they've re, just taken out of a fifteen hundred gallon tank? And that's, they've been able to undercut the cost of some of the local sewer pump providers. My father and I used to do this years ago, and not the dumping portion, but we, we were in, he was in such a business, but there's still, that's a common practice, so the stuff that we're putting out there has been through a lot of processes. And the stuff that, uh, Ajax Sewer Company has pulled out of somebody's tanks up in, in northern Aiken County, they can go out on a field now and just spray it just the way it is, um, debris and all, and so. So what we're putting out is not for this, so, um, well, if the MPCA looked at it from a business standpoint, right, so you look at the numbers, if you looked at our numbers, um, it, it looks like there's some payback there, again, we're kind of, and we're locked into what we have, what are your smart things?
Well, so we're gonna have to go, it's high tech waste that we're putting there in the crops.
Well.
Our crops should go breathe, we should have. And I'll be, I'll be driving about a hundred eighty-two acres and see ten foot plants because it's high tech, I mean, it is processing. I mean, versus what you're talking about on a septic.
Right, well, that's true.
Who knows what's in that?
Exactly right, so, that was my point, really that was my intention, so.
Mayor, I'm also, just, just so we're clear here, the, the, again, I, I want to try to, to have as much land as possible permitted. It doesn't mean that we're gonna apply every, uh, or use every acre every year. Uh, it gives us that flexibility to go where we can, um, and this is an option. If, if you want to utilize it, utilize that hundred and eighty-three, it's an option, but.
Well, I just want to say here before I turn over to Robin and Sarah, is that we looked at the numbers, councils looked at the numbers, landfill to land application, it's a no brainer, I mean, you're saving ten, twenty thousand dollars per year. I mean, why the heck would you want to do that?
Plus it's repurposing, I mean, and that's.
Repurposing, yeah, yeah, it benefits the farmers. Um, like I say, yeah, the sad part is, we're dumping on a platinum plant that we paid five bucks for and it would be a lot better if we were pumping it on land that we paid a lot less for. That's not, that's not what it is, I mean, when you pay in two million plus in interest and bonds over the years, which is now more than two million versus that you should have bought for six, seven hundred thousand dollars, that was a mistake made, we can't rectify, but at least we can make something positive out of something bad. Rob, that's for your comments.
Well, I, I ran over this and I kept confusing myself. So, and I kept thinking, oh my God, we're gonna spray this stuff over the hundred and twenty-nine, hundred and twenty-seven acres and then it's unfarmable for fourteen months or something like that. So, it's just gonna be kind of staggered throughout and, uh, we're still renting that land to the farmer, we're still bringing that revenue in, at least enough to pay taxes and stuff like that. That was my biggest concern was, if we're gonna lose that revenue to, to bring this revenue in, I was looking at thirteen, twenty, nineteen thousand dollars and we're getting rent from the farmer, that's where I was kind of confused on, are we doing biosol's only and we're cutting the lease? Or are we gonna continue to do that plus the biosol's?
Can't you get right away on that?
If council chooses to utilize the hundred meters, there is no, there is no stop of renting of the property, there is no stop of crop production. It's just a natural fertilizer that's applied, uh, and needs to be incorporated within forty-eight hours of that being spread on.
Which he would do himself and cultivate himself, right? Which he wants to do, right?
Yeah.
I, I just made it sure.
And one other, I'll just say the other word.
A lot of it is timing and, and timing with farming practices. When they're pulling their corn off or when they're pulling their soybeans off and then when they're going to be plowing, you know, there. As long as they're, as long as we're timing with them and getting that applied on before, well, right after they get their crop off and before they plow, that's the ideal time. And it is a, this window with the MPCA guidelines, we have to follow everything that they are requiring, that's recording that goes along with that, uh, the bio, the, the applicator license that, that, uh, they have to carry, requires their paperwork and documentation of where this goes and, and how it's applied.
Right, but understand something, if I'm correct on this, where he'd have to pay for fertilizer to fertilize his crops, he's not paying for this.
He would subsidize, yeah, this, this would subsidize.
Right, we're, we're giving him product, it's high tech, that he can buy and then he's gonna cultivate, use that, so he comes out a win-win on this. We come out a win, you know, we're using land we can't use for anything else. Uh, we're never gonna give back to great people or above that in my lifetime, but the same unless a developer comes across it, builds a couple hundred houses or three hundred houses or whatever, so, which was the thought until seven, which never appeared. So I'm just saying to you that the farmer comes up with that, uh, but it benefits us too. Because the savings is there from landfill to land, uh, application each year. So like, for instance, the first year, instead of paying a hundred four thousand seventy dollars for landfill, you're paying ninety thousand one, two hundred ten. You're saving almost fourteen thousand dollars that year, second year you're saving almost twenty thousand dollars. It was, you know, it averages that out for the life of the five years. So by the way, by the time he comes down to it, the bottom line is, um.
Ninety-three thousand.
Ninety-three thousand, ninety-eighty dollars you're saving. And he makes some use of the land.
And again, that's any land, any farmer permitted land, MPCA permitted land within ten miles.
Right, and your three hundred ten, your three hundred tons are not gonna go on the whole hundred ninety-six acres.
Probably not, they're, they're gonna wanna try and utilize that, um, whatever fields they can, that are permitted by the city.
And I agree with you, getting more land is better, so not everybody gave one. No developer landed biosol's like to a tractor. Now, they spray this on?
No, it's a, it's a, it's in a dry form and spread.
And he cultivates it?
Yeah.
Any other thing I asked you on?
The next one, uh, I need to bring up a new subject, um, that I brought up years ago, now that our wastewater treatment facility has been running for several years. I would, I would really like St. Francis to incorporate bringing in those loads from our surrounding cities, sewer, you know, septic people. Some way to test it, make sure we don't have hot load, whatever. There's gonna be some companies that they have their own land, they're gonna go spray it themselves, but there's people that are driving down to St. Paul, companies, that we can save them money by being a hub per se. And now we can kind of see how our plant's running, kind of have a place to not spend oodles of money to take it to the dump, we can do more biosol's. I think it's a, a good time to start kind of putting those policies together to have those companies within our region to be able to come and dump at our station.
I can assure you, we've never dropped that off of our radar. It's, it's been up on the forefront, uh, just with the working through, trying to determine how, uh, Oak Grove is going to impact us, um, biosol's, getting rid of this stuff. You know, obviously we start bringing in the, the heavier, uh, untreated waste from a septic tank, that will create more biosol's right out of the gate, so we'll be, we'll be needing, uh, land to apply that biosol's, uh, just because of that increased capacity of ours.
And I just want to make sure it's, it's feasibly financially for St. Francis. You know, we don't want to bring it in for a hundred bucks and it costs three hundred bucks to get rid of it, you know, I want to make sure that if we're doing a service, that we're bringing revenue in.
Absolutely.
Right, as long as we can protect ourselves from hot loads.
Yep.
Which is, I mean, it's something that we have to look at.
We have, uh, uh, contact with other. We have, uh, uh, contact with other cities that have utilized or brought in septic haulers, and we do have their information. We've gone through other, out on the web and, and found other information out there as far as cities that do receive septic haulers. We have all that information in the packet and we're just kind of sitting on it. We want to make sure that our facility is gonna do what it needs to do, and once we are comfortable with what we're treating now, uh, our intent was to invite a septic hauler in and bring in one load, just so we could see how our plant reacts, and then build from there perfectly.
Okay, Sarah?
Well, a lot of my questions were kind of answered already, so, um, I, you know, I guess if, I want to make sure that, I mean, I know that you're leaving us, but we want to make sure that we're still actively gonna be looking for, for land, obviously, because that is gonna benefit us in the long haul anyways. And it benefits other farmers as well, not just using that one property, or three little ones too, so. I think we need to continue moving forward, plenty more, more land, and I know that's a long process, it's not an easy one, but we need to make sure that we stand top of that and this doesn't drop on the side.
Absolutely, absolutely, those are two key, the dumping of the septic as far as protecting ourselves from hot loads, now that's something we should always have on the table, and then, um, let me keep this table. All right, on that, you have a motion tonight to adopt a biosolids disposal, approve this, utilizing how many acres of biosolids and application. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion, yeah.
Councilor Robinson makes that motion, I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes a second, ready for discussion, I will hear you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, post, motion carries. All right, moving on to work session here, uh, we have to set a work session here, uh, coming up here, and, um, Joe's given us three dates. So, um, the ninth, eleventh, or the seventeenth? I would suggest the eleventh myself, just because it's hard about the seventeenth at the other council meeting that I go to, we said, uh, it's two in a row. But I'll go with whatever the council wants to. You can make any one, Kevin?
The eleventh, first, ninth, ninth, I think, I'll.
Eleventh, you get it?
Yes.
Okay, Rob?
Uh, eleventh looks good.
Sarah?
Yep.
So, how about if we do it, um, twelve, eleven, five thirty, is that good? PM at City Hall? Is that good for everybody?
Yep.
Um, I said, I said. Okay. Work session. City Hall. Is that okay already?
Yes.
So, September eleventh, which is December, but. September eleventh is a Wednesday, five thirty PM at the City Hall. Work session will be on three items, on the agenda that needs discussing. Okay? All right, you have that all set there, Joe? Okay, that's cool. All right, moving on to, um, I'll turn over to the guys with the knowledge of audio equipment.
I'd say it's a new expert on this.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, funny, we have proposals we contacted Guitar Center, uh, this isn't much different than some of the equipment, um, that we brought forward in the City Council last January. Um, this is, they have some refined knowledge, whereas, um, we brought it to you last, earlier in the year, it was kind of in theory, this may work. Now, the guy is saying this, this should work, there's no reason why it should not. So, there's some added pieces in there from when we brought it to you last time. Uh, it proves a case, a solid metal case to carry the equipment at City Hall here, and or store the equipment here, or wherever we gotta do. Um, and then also, um, since we're purchasing it through Guitar Center, the, um, the restocking fee that was kind of the barrier in purchasing this last time has gone away, um, since they have this stuff in stock, and, um, that was a big deterrent last time. Now, there's a forty-five day return policy, no questions asked on this, so, um, he said he can get it all set up for us at the store, um, hooked into his laptop at the store, make sure it works, so it's kind of like, um, we know what pieces go where, outlets or mics, and then we can bring it up here and give it a tester on the computer up here. Um, that's the, uh, arrangement that we have worked out with Guitar Center at this time. Um, so this is in front of you, uh, to determine if you guys want to try and upgrade the audio and video for the City Council meetings. Um, everyone will have their own lapel mic, so it'd basically be just something you can click on your waistband, click it right here on your shirt. Um, so everyone will have a clear, direct line of audio coming from, uh, their position, and we have four extra mics, um, with potential boom stands. And I know I wanted to deter shouting from the audience, but, um, if we wanted to put it on here a little bit.
Well, you're going, you're going with four of those?
Yeah, so the packages that we have is, one of them, it comes with eight lapel mics, the other one comes with four lapel mics and four of those. Um, with the thought that we'd have to replace that one for sure, and we just have three extra mics if something happened. I didn't think we needed, because they never really counted, but.
Or you're going, you're going twelve lapel clips, right?
So, we'll have enough lapel mics and then we'll have, um, four of those. Because it becomes the end.
We're not doing, we're not doing, uh, what is that?
Oh, yeah, karaoke.
What is it called?
Karaoke.
Karaoke, we're not doing karaoke early, I mean. So, I mean, I'm saying, we know, we know we need that one, right?
Correct, and so we would have to have one of those for sure.
Right.
Unfortunately, when you buy these mic systems, it doesn't come, I want seven lapels and one of those, they've kind of already predetermined how they're splitting up, and so.
To get the extra lapels, you're gonna need to get them both.
Okay, so you get the extra ones or lapel?
And I got your heart set, your experience set, but.
Yeah, right. No, I just was asking about why we need four of those. But on the other hand, you got, you know, I mean, if you ever want to expand or want bigger, we already have it placed, which, because this will be portable, right? We could take this to whatever facilities we have in the future, correct?
Yep, he said, uh, I guess he did, I did more looking into it than I, he thought we could do a whole thing in that metal case that's in this package, all our pieces, all the insulation.
Okay, but it can be taken to any other facility we have in the future.
Yep.
You like.
I'd be volunteered to all of it.
No, I'm saying, I mean, it won't, it's ours, we're gonna be using it here with our meetings. We're not gonna be using it for IST fifteen meetings.
That's up to the council.
Well, I just want to bring that up to council because unless they're willing to share the cost with us, uh, which I understand from Sarah, might be a little difficult for them to come up with, uh, it's our product, and, uh, we don't want it broken by someone else. Uh, it's been a problem for them for years, um, but it's, and we're gonna solve it, it's ours.
Yeah, I would say part of the problems, some of the problems we've had, I think they had classes, I don't know what goes on it, but some of the stuff is getting adjusted in team meetings. Um, they're utilizing it for other things, and then we would come in here and it wasn't how the settings that we had last time. If we did bring it back to City Hall and back here every single time, we would ensure that the settings would be the same as we want them.
And you like thrust?
Yes.
Would be seen, council meetings. That's just my idea, Kevin, what do you have?
Ask, uh, Sarah for she's.
Yeah, Sarah, you get the first one.
Well, I'm very happy that we've actually come up with something that looks like it'll be a good solution for, for someone, because it is frustrating. Uh, at least now, yeah, to watch a city council meeting, the, I don't know, visual, video should be better. Um, with this, now, um, one of the things that's harder is when we're showing something up on the screen, it just, you're still just looking at us, so the people aren't able to see what's on the screen. Are we gonna be able to have something? I mean, will that be?
Can it be?
Turns out.
I mean, we have, we have.
I'm sure that's something that you can certainly look into.
Because it's just, it's frustrating when you're sitting at home and they're talking about this presentation, and just sitting there staring at us staring at a screen. You know.
I've tried turning that one a long time ago, and you couldn't read the screen.
No, no, you can't, no, because we, I asked about that at the school board meetings as well.
We're gonna test you this, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Because we have, we have some, we have that forty-five day window, right? So, we can test it sometimes. Um, and, you know, um, I, as a liaison to the school board, sorry, school board, but we asked, we've been asking far before I even got on council, to please, let's figure something out together. And it just, it never happened, it was, it was too much, they couldn't do it, and, um, it's taken us a while, but we, we muddled through, and I think we found a good solution, and, um, at this point, I, I mean, I don't know that it would do us any good to ask the school district to help pay for it. Um, I don't think that they're probably going to do it, I mean, maybe they would, but in my opinion, it's something that we're buying for us, and I think that, I mean, that was kind of my thing in the beginning was, you know, if we're buying it, I want to be able to take it with us. I want to be able to use it if at some point we get our own chambers, you know, that would be nice to have our own equipment. Um, you know, again, if the, if the school district helps pay for it, what happens if we get, you know, if we don't meet here anymore? How, who's gonna buy our who, and I think it gets really confusing, and, you know, well, now we paid this much, but it's only worth this much now. I think we just opened a box that we maybe don't wanna get into. So, um, I, I like the, I'm not great with technology, but I'm trusting that, at least Kevin, I'm not sure. I know Joe, I know Joe Milbauer did a lot of the upfront work, and I appreciate that.
Well, it's gonna be really, really unique for the public, is if this actually works, they're actually gonna hear us and see us better, and probably think it's a different city.
They might, so.
Might not think of St. Francis, so.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, that's just kind of, I mean, if the council wants to ask the school district, I just don't think it's a great idea. I mean, it's, it's, I guess if it was like twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, you might want to think about it, but at this price tag, I think it's something that we can handle.
Right, and there's, according to here, there's one five thousand million unspent in the city's general fund for two thousand nineteen, which covers. So, uh, my humble thought, by the way, also is, is that we're not just buying something designed for this building, it can be taken with us. Where will we go, where will we go, uh, and utilize? So, in other words, it's not, you're not designing something just specific for this role, so it's only one time shot, so that makes it even better. All right, Rob, anything to say there?
Um, I, for years, this has been a problem, and I, I kind of like this idea. Would it be safe to say we record the, the work session and kind of get a, an overview of how that worked for the seventeenth meeting, you know, so you guys can review how it worked, did it work? Is it possible, is that too close to being able to?
I talked to Joe too about trying to test it out and play with it, because there's gonna be some trial and error, I'm trying with how it sounds.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure we'll have to set aside some time to, whether you're reviewing the city channel, even though there's no meeting going on, playing with it to see how it comes out.
Right.
Type of thing.
Is the eleventh too close to being able to purchase and, and, you know, just play with it, we can record, we're getting recorded anyway? Um, so we can record it one way, but kind of use that time to?
No, and that's, that's a good question, one thing that Guitar Center is so big, they're gonna be ordering it from someone else, and this stuff is not stocked coming out of Roseville or even by the mine from, so it's all gonna have to be special organs shipped nationally to that location.
Okay, but yet, but yet, there's no restock because it's in stock? It's not in stock yet?
Uh, it's not, I don't, I guess I don't know how Guitar Center does their stocking, but they're, the people who are looking at buying some of the components from before, it wasn't Guitar Center, it was a place out of California. Uh, Guitar Center, whether they have that stacked or whatever, uh, they don't have anything for returns at all, so they probably should be back to selling.
So, if it's a third party, you have to pay a stock return, not third party, through the distribution center of your own.
I guess, yeah, and then whatever, whatever your business, so.
I mean, if you can't do it at the eleventh, which would be quick, sixteen certain minutes meeting, kids jump, they'll come in like an hour early and set it up to see how it works.
Sure.
I don't.
I don't know if an hour would be enough time to know what the, I would like to personally do it on a different day or.
Right.
All right, we just almost have the middle of the day and do some trial stuff, we get, set aside two hours or something, or three hours?
We could order to be more bodies to test it out, just to be totally honest, I mean, we don't even.
Well, we could have staff, you know, we could have staff, you could go under and send these chairs, and we could mock it out. I thought we'd do a reverse, we'll send their chairs, we'll send our chairs, we'll do a mock-up, whatever, I mean, test it, our seat.
Sorry, are we using this computer?
That's what we were planning on.
Because that's, you said that is school district's computer?
Correct. That's where my other question kind of came in too, is where, what are we sharing, what are we not sharing, or, I mean, if you're using that computer, that's how it's set up to broadcast, you can quickly replace the camera, but how well that's gonna do unless you're gonna put it up, take it down, do all that every time you can, I don't think it would take too long to do that, but I don't know what.
Can this be set up to a laptop?
There's more logistics, I think, to know what we're actually dealing with too, which, when we go down there and dive, is there a different software for the camera? Just plug and play, move and perks, is it, that's kind of the questions that I have as to whether just come in here an hour ahead of time. We're gonna have to go down to Guitar Center, they're gonna get it all set up. We're gonna have to probably, I'm thinking me and Joe are gonna have to go down there together and figure out, one, how you set it up, what you do, so we have an idea, at least a basic understanding to get it going.
And reset it up up here.
Yeah.
Well, how, how much more would it be to make it completely independent of the school district, where they're all, can, can you hook it up to a laptop, I mean?
Sounds my understanding, something other than an iPad, a laptop would have been more suitable from what I, again, Joe did the final, you know, put the cross the T's without the I's, but that's what the gentleman at Guitar Center said, the laptop would be more farmable than.
Right, and laptops are inexpensive.
I've got Apple at home, and it's just sitting there. I've got it using, so you can format it.
Otherwise, you only, like, the global is like two, about two to four hundred dollars for a laptop. That could handle it. Maybe you have to buy it. So, I, I think if you're gonna go independent, if you're gonna go independent, go independent. I mean, we're coming here, we take it out of the box, we put together with ours. You know, we don't, if you're gonna, because otherwise you have other things that's hooked to their system, it's still part of that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if they hook it to their system and for some reason, it does something to their system, then.
Or they're, or because we're hooked to their system, it doesn't mean, we don't get the full effect of our new stuff. We should just go all new, you don't, it would be something here, three years, we've been sitting on this council, three of us, and then we were talking about this problem three years, the years before that. So, if we actually can solve this for a few bucks, we should do it, for our audience, viewing audience.
We're suggesting before we move forward that we do more research on hardware, whatever.
Well, computer and the software, yeah, I mean, I think it would be prudent, you should think, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, because the cost might not be that much more, but it gets full independence, which, we took it to another location, we need it anyway.
That's true, Kevin.
And we'd hold it in an hour or a minute.
We got John, we got strong men around here.
I'm just saying, if these don't make it, you have to think about.
Well, either they are, or they're not, so you want to lock it up, you stick it in the corner, and take it out. You know, I mean.
I don't have much good that, but they're saying my building, so that's, that's the kind of things that we have links.
Right, but understand something, we also store files from that, and no charge, in places we could use storage to.
They work it out where we have our meetings here, for our, they can exchange stuff, yeah.
Okay, so we could take over our storage. I don't want to get all these details.
That's, yeah, that's the unfortunate part of being in a different building, is that that's, those are things that we have to have, and have to consider.
All right, so Joe, can we, can we find?
Well, if steps forward on this package and, and exploring going completely independent with our own computer and everything, it's all in a cart.
Well, I definitely talked to Guitar Center, whatever it is, and she, you say they recommend going with laptop, they said?
Yeah.
And a laptop would be pretty easy to hook up.
My, my concern is the immediate transmission fee to the channel, however the school has it set up, so that the public can watch it right now.
And that's one thing that I have to know, I'm not an IT guy.
Me neither.
Part of it, I don't know.
It's all through YouTube.
Right.
But somebody, there's, the school set it up, and there's, uh, it's called an OBS, and I don't know what that is, they set it up. So, you have to start this OBS to.
We have a contract with Roseville to do our regular IT stuff, but they have somebody in their staff that would, I mean, we're paying for some time, or maybe even some retain time already, that we probably don't use all our time, maybe, but.
It's only possible if they could walk through the lab.
And if this carries over until January, that's fine, I don't want to race into it, that, that last look, when I looked at what I made the other day, was thirty-five to fifty-five viewers of our meeting. Um, are we doing it for those fifty-five, or are we doing it for the people that could be watching us right now? I know in the early days, people were getting text messages as meetings were going on, so people are watching, the after effect, but again, the audio is garbage, and this is the first time, this is as close as we've gotten, I don't want to race into it either, I'm not spending this to spend. Um, like you said, you guys wrestle with this for a while, that's really the last piece of our puzzle, as far as the displays, by all means, there are wide open invitations, come on. By all means, there are wide open invitations, come on down, come fill a seat, there's many, you know, plenty of seats to be had. But if you want some clear audio, this might be an opportunity, and if we don't race into it, let's fix it, it'll be ready for January late or February first, but...
You can get a decent hour, that's the purpose of running a little bit of video, or doing what you want to do, if it's dedicated to that purpose, for relatively cheap, that's not an issue.
Well, whatever we do, we want to do it right. We don't want to hacha-hacha, we don't want to do a mistake here and then do something five thousand, come back and end it a thousand.
But as I'm saying, you want to go completely independent, which I get too, because unless you're gonna be, if you're gonna be hooking it up, I'm hooking it every time, and that's kind of where my concern, but I thought about the camera. You know, if you're gonna get the camera, but, yeah, if you're gonna go full on...
And eventually if you take it in location, you're gonna have to have it anywhere.
But we're probably in this environment for at least another three years or more, so if this buys us three years of clear audible meetings, then maybe...
It might.
It might.
That's what I say, we're not, we're not doing it for the fifty-five, it's like, it's like Nexo. If we promote this right, and those fifty-five people said, hey, I can understand what they're saying, and it's, you know, productive, that fifty-five mushroom.
We can sell commercials, make revenue, you know? Nexo commercials and...
Okay, so what direction do you need right now, go for what we have?
You know, staff, staff can spend up to five hundred, or up to five thousand hours, and so just the direction of the council on the board for us to just try this, because last time we brought in restocking fee was a deal breaker. Just the direction that we can go forward and try and accumulate the equipment to make this be fully functional, you don't even need a motion.
Alright, well, there you go, done deal.
I, I would say not to purchase it just yet. You know, we want our forty-five days to be good forty-five days of testing, not buy it, and fifty days later, we get a computer machine, well, that won't work with this computer and that computer. I, I think the idea Kevin had with, with our IT that we pay for is start from the front and...
Yeah, and then find out from Guitar City what they recommend computer-wise, maybe they have some idea what actually, you know, like gaming computers for gaming, rigger computers for regular stuff and all this, so maybe they have some computer they see really works well with your system is. Maybe they give us an idea, you know, because they know how to, you know how it works, and I'm sure they figured it out before, so IT's a good idea, that's a lot of good ideas. So, I mean, what if something, they could actually view us and hear us, right?
And see what we're looking at, too, not being like, no way.
And that could enhance our audience, that'd be something. Alright, moving on to, uh, female public, we don't have to worry about that. Um, okay, so council member reports, and we'll start with Sarah.
Um, I went to the, the tree lighting, and, uh, that was very successful. We did find out that, um, we need way more cookies than hot chocolate for next year. And ran out fairly quickly, it was a, a nice night, so we had a, a good time, turnout. I think probably around three hundred people, so it was, um, the park was packed, so that was good. Um, and then, um, this week on Thursday, I was invited to go speak to a rowing troop of all City Councils, so I'm gonna go talk to the second, third grade girl of the all City Council on what we do, and how we get elected, and...
I've done that with, kind of, uh, the council.
Yep, I did that with the council, pretty good, like, uh, before I was even on...
It's always nice to see how people get involved, or want to know something. Anything else? Good job.
Um, I also went to the tree lighting, it was very successful. I did not get any hot chocolate, um, so, Sarah? Um, but it was well, um, there was a lot of people there, um, it was a good turnout, I really appreciated the, the community coming together and, and to that event. Also, uh, December the fifth is gonna be Santa on the fire truck, um, that's gonna start at five-thirty, that is, there's a map, uh, posted, uh, the route. So even if you live off the route, come out, support the fire department, they're collecting food for the food shelf.
For days.
And...
Can we still drop it off at the fire department as a fire station too?
We can make arrangements if somebody wants to make a delivery direct to fire station, we can contact either through my office or on Facebook directly, and we'll make arrangements to make sure that happens.
That's on December the fifth. Um, December the twelfth is gonna be, uh, Santa at the police department, um, five to seven PM. Go and support Santa, ask him what you want for Christmas, um, or tell him what you want for Christmas. Paul, I don't know where this came from, but is there anything I can do to rip this thing up? Or I, I do appreciate the last couple of years working with you, it was, it was kind of a kick in the teeth to me. Um, Eric, I wish you well, and I really do appreciate all the hard work that, that over the past three years of being here on the council.
Thank you.
By the way, didn't they run a hot dogs night tonight when you came too?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe, anything to say?
Um, well, went to the tree lighting as well, went to the county fire protection council with, uh, the mayor. Good news is that city budgets and, uh, their budgets are gonna be on the pass now, great, special meeting. Um, and, uh, Paul, thank you for everything, I'm disappointed, but you gotta do what you gotta do, and I support you anyway, again. If you really let me know if you need anything.
Thank you.
And, uh, while I did vote no, uh, for the full-time fire chief, I did have a good conversation with Dave prior to the meeting, um, earlier today. And, um, I'd like to reflect that I will continue to support the fire department, that you do have, uh, my full support, and I do believe that you will leverage your power to make it, so that I voted wrong today. Um, and I appreciate that. Other than that, uh, I think that's about it. Thank you again.
Okay, Kevin?
Uh, I also want to thank Paul for sure, it's here with all the time I got to know him, and, uh, the, the department runs really well, and the exemplary employees, you can tell the, of the continuity and the way things roll. Uh, you will have to surrender the plaque that the mayor gave you a couple weeks ago. I'm just kidding. No, I wish you well, I, it, you know, you're doing what's right for you and your family, and, uh, you can't, uh, be grateful if you want to do something better, so you're a young man, younger than some of us out here from there. Um, but, uh, other than that, uh, no, it's December, there's no fire around, people are plowing, I look up at the plow guys, um, I've noticed people already, I remember when I first moved to the community, I got a letter from the city, and boy, I was ticked, it says, you're pushing snow into the street, and you're gonna get a... And I thought the, the stopper was gonna come and knock on my door, but I've seen some of my neighbors doing it already, and I, you know, tried to tell them, when that stuff freezes hard, it really makes it bad for your neighbors, as well as, uh, the plow drivers for the second time around. When those plows hit those things, it's, it, uh, it takes a while for it to come up, so be thoughtful to your neighbors when you do that kind of stuff, keep it clear, um, and help a neighbor. I, I know there's people out there that need help to the left end or the right, the sign laws need a help, or they can't do it, or, uh, it just takes a little bit more effort to, to make it good for everybody, and once the sun comes out, it'll clean some of that up, so... Uh, also some real tragedies lately in the cities. Um, if you see something, say something, uh, there's a lot of things that shouldn't happen amongst families and whatnot, now, uh, this time of year especially, so just be mindful with all I have. Thank you.
So are you seeing that, that people having plow services come and plow, or pushing snow on the streets?
Or they're plowing their own snow across the street, and across into a ditch or culvert, and there's bleeding ridges and whatnot. And like I said, I remember I got my first letter from the city, and I was like, oh my gosh, I'm in trouble, you know, and it wasn't me, and I go, actually, call the city, well, Mr. Robinson, it's a uniform letter, and everybody gets it, and I go, okay, I came down about three notches, but... I can see where it happens, and when the stuff does freeze, the plows are banging the bop, and then you're going down residential streets, and that leaves pretty...
Do we have some ordinance on that, because, oh, I, I thought Minneapolis or, well, any city I've lived in, I always thought they had something to say, you can't push snow up a driveway onto the streets.
It's a state law.
State law, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Just for you to know that.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, I want to say, Paul, um, I was shocked, um, I'm gonna miss you, um, you've done a great service to the city, uh, that award, there's no backs on that award, by the way, you earned that award.
It's a restocking fee.
Be started today, um, hopefully get somebody as, uh, equal to your level of competency and leadership in that department, I hope so, and that's what we're gonna be striving for. But I can only tell you that it will be a hard seat to, to, uh, replace. Thank you for your service, I wish you the best in your life, health, happiness, and whatever goes along with that.
Thank you.
Also, I want to say to the audience here, on the fire chief here, um, this council, it bet this, had many discussions, many hours on this. Um, this pay is not based on future local government aid or, or, or future development, it's based on what's existing today, and we can afford it, and we should do it, because it brings continuing continuity to a leadership from a department that has lacked that for twenty-plus years. So to me, um, I don't make these decisions lightly on my behalf, um, I went to this in every possible way, multiple times, stayed up many hours, just looking at the numbers, and everything that went with that, and I can tell you, again, this council bet this properly, with many, many discussions and many hours involved in working with staff. Uh, this was not taken lightly at all, um, but I think it's the right move in a time where we are growing, and, uh, this becomes a department that has lacked in that leadership, and has it now, and it's been, and we've seen this kind of, uh, uh, accomplishments in two and a half years at fifty percent output, I think we'll look at it at a hundred percent output. I like what you said, Joe, uh, on your support, and that, to hope that you'll be proven wrong, uh, but you have to vote your conscience, and that's the way to go. Always, always vote, and feel what you feel the best for the majority of our residents, whether we agree altogether, we don't, it shows that we are flexible, and we do have an objectivity here, and that we all just don't sync together, uh, as in the past. Uh, we may have five-oh votes, we may have four-one votes or three-two votes, but at the end of the day, our votes are based on what we individually think was best for the majority of our residents, and that's how we shape your business here. This city is in the best fiscal shape it's ever been, strong budgetary management is in place, and, uh, we are going in the right direction. So on that, I can only thank staff, and everyone involved here for the jobs you're doing, uh, and the council is being workable and approachable, and, uh, the public needs to know that. And, uh, if the public wouldn't work better with us, um, come and help us to serve you better, and like I say again, stay out the Facebook pages and bring your problem to us, as we will address them the best that we can, working for you. Um, on that, um, Rob's already brought up Santa's truck and everything else there, I can only say with the holidays, as I said, newsletter and all that, drive safely to your destinations, get there alive, enjoy your family, enjoy this family time that comes equally here, um, and, uh, hopefully everyone will have a safe and happy holidays. On that, any other further business that we have? None, well then I'll call this meeting to adjourn this meeting at eight-twenty-two. Thank you.